Okay, are we on?
It should be now. Yeah. Okay, here we go. Okay, here we go. I'd like to call the order of regular meeting now to President and Board of Trustees, Machesney Park, Illinois, for Monday, September 15th, 2014, Police Stand for the Invocation, led by Pastor Thompson from First Born Ministry, and Pledge of Allegiance, led by Trustee Eric Beck. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for all that you have done for us. Lord, we thank you for this community, God, for what you're doing here, Lord Jesus. Lord, we thank you that you have made it a way in this community, Lord God. Lord God, we thank you for the mayor, God, for all that he's doing, all of the trustees and the boards, Lord God. We ask, Lord God, that you would continue to open up their hearts and their minds, God, that they would make good decisions, Lord God, and that all things would go well in this community, Lord God. And we give you all of the honor, and we give you all of the praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk take a roll call, please?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Here.
Tammon.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Yo.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
Thank you, Laurie, we have a quorum. Next, we have approval of minutes from September 2nd, 2014, Board Meeting, I entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion or changes? I see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next, we have Treasury Report, Steve Johnson.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. I would like to thank Michelle and the staff for their help in preparing the annual Treasurers' Audit this year. I place copies on the annual Treasurers' Report on the back table. This report reflects revenue, compensation, and expenditures summaries for the fiscal year. State income tax, local use tax, and motorfield tax were slightly up from the previous year, while the state sales tax increased 4% from the prior year, which is one of the major contributors for the village's revenues. Overall, the general fund ended up with a net surplus of $328,000, which shows how fiscally sound the village truly is. The annual Treasury Report ended up with a fund balance of $5,739,883.93. This report will be published in the Journal and will be filed with the Winnebago County Clerk's Office and Treasurer's Office. The weekly Treasury Report ends with a fund balance of $9,918,73.6. Also like to make a comment, I was able to attend the Wall of Healing on 9/11, I thought that was a very, very touching type of ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Treasurers' Report.
So made.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The Treasurers' Report has been accepted. Next, we have Communications, Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. And while the mayor's making his way to the podium, if I could have Commander Ramsey and McDonald and Mr. Cabello approach the podium, that would be great. They're with the Korean War veterans, and they have a presentation to make to the village and Mayor Boland.
Thank you, ma'am. As you can see, facing such an auspicious group, I brought a little backup with me just in case. A number of months ago, I appeared before you in a quest for donations, and we wanted to procure the medal that I am wearing here for all of the Korean War veterans here in this area. Thanks to your generosity, we were able to do so, and every one of our veterans proudly wore this medal at some of the ceremonies we've had last and this year for commemorating the 60th, last year, the 60th anniversary of the Korean War. In many cases like this, as you know, an Attaboy certificate is brought out, looked at, thrown away, discarded, and you don't see it six months from now. So we thought it was only fitting and appropriate that we should make a different kind of presentation this evening. Comes with a certificate as the ambassador for peace, written both in Korea and English, signed by Mr. Young Kim, the Minister of Patriots and Veterans Affairs, the Republic of Korea, and General Seon Park of the Republic, ROK Army, if you'll allow me. It is a great honor and pleasure to express the everlasting gratitude of the Republic of Korea and our people for their service you and your countrymen have performed in restoring, preserving our freedom and democracy. We cherish in our hearts the memory of reboundless sacrifices in helping us establish our free nation. In grateful recognition of your dedicated contributions, it is our privilege to proclaim you an ambassador for peace with every good wish of the people of Korea. Let us reaffirm our mutual respect and friendship that may we endure for generations to come. This certificate, along with a medal, is being presented to you tonight with the mayor for displaying your trophy case. It comes in a very nice presentation case, the full medal, a miniature medal, and a lapel pin is in there. And also for your library, the 60th Anniversary Book, Korea Reborn. And it gives a little bit of history about the beginning, the Korean domination by the Japanese, and the results of the end of World War II, when Korea was split up between us and Russia, and that was the reason for the beginning of the Korean War. But this is for your library. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator, very much.
Thank you. I would say, on behalf of the village, the Board of Trustees, and the staff, and all of our citizens, it truly is an honor to receive this from you, but it is you that deserves the honor. Thank you. Thank you.
And at this time, if I could have Alice Uphaus approach the podium. Trustee Kidd will read the proclamation for Constitution Week that is being presented to the Rockford Chapter, the NSDar, in celebration of Constitution Week by Mayor Boland.
Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in the republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2014, marks the 277th anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord the official recognition to this magnificent document, and it is memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasions, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, Jerry Boland, the mayor of the village of Machesney Park, Illinois, do here proclaim these days of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week in Machesney Park, and encourage all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being an American with the rights and responsibilities that privilege involves.
Thank you, Alice. I present this to you from the mayor, our citizens, the staff, and the board, the proclamation of our Constitutional Week, and it's honored to have you here to accept this today. Thank you.
The Rockford Chapter National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution would like to thank Mayor Boland, the trustees, for supporting our efforts to promote Constitution Week. The United States Constitution is 227 years old, has endured longer than any other constitution in the world, and has been used by other countries as a model for drafting their own. As well as being the oldest, it is also the shortest, with 4,400 words. On September 17th, which is Constitution Day, many citizens will be celebrating by ringing bells, reciting the preamble, and flying the flag of the United States, the Stars and Stripes, the Star Spangled Banner. As you may know, the national anthem, the Star Spangled Banner, was written 200 years ago by Francis Scott Key, following the War of 1812. Fly your flag with pride. Please mark June 14th on your calendar next year, 2015. The Rockford Chapter will be having a special ceremony at Midway Village to celebrate the 100th birthday of our Illinois state flag. We are extremely proud that a Rockford Chapter daughter, Lucy Derwent Keeler, designed that state flag. Invitations will be forthcoming closer to the event. Thank you, Mayor, and I do have a couple of things for your members here. I have some flag codes. If you'd pass those around, I would be much appreciated. Hopefully, I brought enough. The next time I come, I will be bringing you the little state flags.
Outstanding.
All right?
We appreciate it very much.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And at this time, trustee Tammon will be reading a proclamation for Manufacturing Day in Machesney Park, being presented by Mayor Boland to Teresa Beach Shalo, President of Superior Joining Technologies Incorporated. Teresa, if you'd like to go to the podium, that would be great.
Whereas the Rockford Chamber of Commerce and its Manufacturing Council have organized a special field trip program, making it possible for all area high schools to participate in the inaugural National Manufacturing Day Program created by the Fabricators and Manufacturers Association International, the National Association of Manufacturers, the Manufacturing Institute, and the Department of Commerce's Hollings Manufacturing Extension Partnership, and whereas the Winnebago County economy is driven by its manufacturing base and seeks to provide area manufacturers with the highest skilled workforce, possible by encouraging local students to prepare academically for the range of high-tech, high-skill jobs offered by those local employers. And whereas on October 2nd, 2014, hundreds of students will be taken to dozens of area manufacturing facilities to learn firsthand about the career opportunities local manufacturing provides. And now, therefore, Jerry D. Boland, Mayor of the village of Machesney Park, do hereby proclaim the day of October 2nd, 2014, as Manufacturing Day in Machesney Park, and urge all citizens to take part in the celebration of our manufacturing sector by choosing to visit one of the many manufacturing companies that will host an open house on that date.
Thank you. Teresa, I want to present this to you from the Rockford Chamber of Commerce, from the village of Machesney Park, the staff, the board, the citizens. I want to congratulate you and all the manufacturers that opened their doors to our students. You certainly give them a glimpse of what high-tech manufacturing is, and we need that very much, and we appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to each one of you for being appreciative of manufacturing and how it turns the economy in our region. It really does, not just the direct manufacturing job, but also the jobs support of manufacturing that are created in our community. Something else I wanted to bring to your attention, and I'll leave cards for the audience on their way out, but as a kickoff, Superior Joining Technologies is bringing a movie called American Made Movie, and we're going to do it at the Sullivan Theater. There's 282 seats, and you can go on to the website and click in and get a ticket if you're interested, but Black Hawk Bank from here in Machesney Park is providing the popcorn, and so we are kind of kicking off Manufacturing Week here in the Rock River Valley with that event. So, thank you very much for your time.
And at this time, we're very pleased for one of our younger citizens. Trustee Tom Yo will be reading a proclamation that the mayor will be presenting in honor of, and I'll crucify this name, Tayato Thu, our student from Harlem High School who achieved magnificent things over the summer. Trustee Yo.
Whereas Tayato Thu is a Machesney Park resident and an honor student at Harlem High School, and whereas while many students were enjoying the last days of their summer vacation, 36 exceptional high school students and three teachers from across the United States and Japan chose to spend two weeks participating in hands-on research focused on science, technology, and engineering, and math, and whereas Tayato was one of those individuals selected to work on cutting-edge projects created to expose the students to scientific research and real-world scientists, and increase their awareness of career opportunities in related fields. And whereas Tayato represented Harlem High School in Machesney Park with pride and honor during the U.S. Department of Energy Opportunity, and whereas Tayato deserves our greatest respect, his dedication to intense concentration of achievement is an inspiration not only to the students at Harlem High School, but all residents as well. He deserves to be congratulated for his strong spirit and determination to succeed. Now, therefore, I, Jerry D. Boland, Mayor of the village of Machesney Park, hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 16th, 2014, to be Tayato Thu Day in Machesney Park, and urge all citizens to congratulate Tayato for his achievements at the Joint Science and Technology Institute and as a student at Harlem High School.
I want to thank you first for all your achievements, for a young man, my gosh, you're going places, young man. On behalf of the Harlem School, and of course, our citizens in Machesney Park, the mayor, our board, and staff, we really appreciate a student that really steps out and shines above all, and you certainly have done that for Machesney Park, and this is just a small token of this proclamation, and we just want to say thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You'll never be a politician.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Yeah, really good. Okay. Thank you, Lori. What did I get to here? Next is warrants, I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrants.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I see none, will the clerk take roll call?
Trustee Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Lori, the warrants have been approved. Next, we have administrative reports, and on the consent agenda, if I have no objection, I would like to remove Item C from the consent agenda tonight. Is there any objection? Item C has been removed from the consent agenda. I'd like to make a quick comment, a couple things, and Steve has already mentioned the healing wall, that certainly was an outstanding thing, and I'd like to thank Vietnam Rockford Chapter Charter for bringing that to our community, for everybody to unite and begin some of the healing and the feelings that people still have and hurt. We appreciate that, and we thank Bruce Jacobson for heading that up and making that happen. We also had a firefighter memorial service Saturday at the North Park Fire Station, and we appreciate everybody that made it out to that, that could make it to it, and again, thanks Chief Joel Halstrom. With that, we have Attorney Tom Green.
I have no report tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Green. Next, we have Human Resources and Accounting Manager, Michelle Johansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The village's fiscal year ended April 30th of 2014, and the required annual audit has been completed. I provided a summary of the year's results to the board, and now I'd like to introduce Carla, who is a senior audit manager on the village's audit from Sickage LLP, who will give a brief overview of the audit report. Thank you.
Good evening. As Michelle said, I'm from Sickage LLP, and we perform the audit for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2014. We issued four different reports that I believe you've been provided, the first being the annual financial report, it's the largest of the four documents. It contains a summary of all the financial information for the village for the fiscal year. We also provided an auditor's communication to the board that contains our required communications under the auditing standards, as well as our report on internal control. We provided a financial and compliance report for the TIF funds. Whenever a TIF fund's cumulative property taxes reach $100,000, we're required to report on compliance and the finances of those funds. You had two TIF funds that had compliance requirements this year, those were the Route 251-173 TIF Fund and the North Second Street TIF Fund. And the final report we issued was the single audit report. Anytime your federal awards exceed $500,000, we're required to do a special compliance audit related to those awards. We don't audit every single federal award that you receive, we perform a risk-based approach, and usually it's programs that are of higher risk and higher dollar amounts that we do end up auditing. I just want to highlight a few things in the reports, and there's a lot of information contained in all of these reports, and after I highlight a few items, then I'll open it up to any questions that you have. First, in the larger document, the annual financial report, if you go to page one, this is our independent auditor's report. The only part of the report that truly belongs to us is auditor's. If you go to page two, you'll see a paragraph that's labeled Opinions. There are several opinion units within the village, just because the way financial statements are reported for governmental entities, and for all of the opinion units that we had, we expressed an unmodified opinion, which is commonly referred to as a clean opinion. It's the highest form of opinion that you can receive. Immediately following the independent auditor's report is the management's discussion and analysis. If you were going to read any part of this annual financial report, I would recommend you read this part of the annual financial report. It provides a highlight of what happened during the year, as well as gives information on planned capital improvements and debt issuances for the village. Next, I'll go to the auditor's communication, which is labeled on the front, auditor's communication to the members of the Board of Trustees, and I'll just highlight, starting on page two, what are required communications to you as the board are. We are required to report in the annual financial report the accounting policies followed by the village. If there's any changes in those policies, we need to communicate those to you. During the year, there were no changes to those policies, and there were no new accounting standards that required to be implemented during the year that would change any of those policies. Anytime there's an accounting estimate included in the annual financial report that could change within the next fiscal year, we're required to communicate that to you. We noted no such estimates that we feel could change within the coming year. We felt that all the financial statement disclosures were neutral, consistent, and clear. Had we encountered any difficulties in performing the audit, we need to communicate that to you. Quite the contrary, we found management to be very, worked very well with us, respond to our inquiries for information, and provide all the information that we requested. Had we identified any corrected or uncorrected misstatements as a result of the audit, we'd have to communicate that to you. We, as auditors, identified no such misstatements. Had we had any disagreements with management, we'd have to disclose to you what those disagreements were, and then the results of how we came to a conclusion with those disagreements. We noted no, we had no disagreements with management during the audit. We always request written representations from management after we complete the audit. That basically just summarizes what management represented to us during the audit and confirms that in writing. Had management made any consultation with other independent auditors, we'd want to be aware of that, so we made sure that the other accountants that were involved had all the pertinent information before they shared a conclusion with management. We were told that no such consultations were made during the year. And then, during our planning phase of the audit, we always meet with management and discuss various items that relate to the audit. To our knowledge, none of the conclusions of those discussions resulted in any decision whether or not we'd be retained as auditors. And then there's portions of the annual financial report, the required supplementary information and the supplementary information that's contained in the back of the annual financial report, that we don't actually audit and express an opinion on. However, we do read that information and make sure that it correlates with the information that we do express an opinion on. That's all I wanted to highlight. I would open it up to any questions you have on any of the reports that we issued? Okay. I just want to thank Michelle and everybody else that was involved in the audit. It went very smoothly, and as usual, they were very prepared for us, and it was a pleasure to work with everyone.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to accept the audit and place on file.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I hear none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next, we have Harlem High School student. Next, we have Harlem High School student, Laasan Justin Porter.
Thank you, Your Honor. After celebrating a huge victory over Boland last Friday, there is no news for this week. But next Friday, the 26th, there will be a football game commemorating veterans. Veterans will be given free admission to the game, reserved seating on the sideline, and a group picture on the field at XPM. It is encouraged that veterans wear military or U.S. apparel, though not required. I have a handout that I would like to leave here in case anyone would like to take a look at it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Next, we have village engineer, Chris Dopkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. A report on ongoing projects here in the village on Ramona Terrace, coring and a new stone is in place to the east of Elkhorn and all the side streets. Contractor's been working on curb and gutter removal and replacements between Fourth and Elm, and the contractor's going to begin the underground storm sewer work west of Elkhorn towards the end of this week and extend that out to the Service Drive. On Colonial Drive, the contractor's installing the underground to the west of Elkhorn towards the Service Drive, and we also are coring out the roadway, starting at Elm and working our way west, so we have a lot of activity on that project. Both Ramona and Colonial have end of October completion dates. The next time we're sitting in this room, we should have curb and gutter very imminent on both projects. Contractor's right on time. Queen Oaks Drive, the contractor's completed most of the underground work, about 95% of it. There's still a handful of yard drains to put in. They too are starting to core on the south end of Queen Oaks Drive, working their way north to put in the new stone for the pavement. And again, the next time we sit in this room, we should be looking at curb and gutter improvements being imminent on Queen Oaks Drive. Rock River Water Reclamation District's contractor has wrapped up all their improvements. They need to let their improvements sit for about 30 days and do some testing, and then they'll be completely done with their project. On the resurfacing, the paving work was completed last Friday with Tampa Lane being the last street that was completed. The contractor has to come back and restore behind the curb and gutter that was removed and replaced in a lot of places yet. We also have just a little bit of stone shoulder work to do. And finally, they're working on the Alpine Road Patch just south of the high school, the bridge. There was a bump in the northbound lanes. We're pulling out that concrete and replacing it to get rid of that bump, and that should be hopefully done at the end of this week or the beginning of next week. We can pull traffic control from Alpine Road. On 173, the contractor's working on the eastbound lanes. Essentially, they're putting in the underground on the east end of the project site and removing old pavement and placing the new stone and base on the west end. Kimber Drive is reopened. The south leg of Continental is closed, and it's going to remain closed for another three weeks while they rebuild that south leg. The contractors reopen Summerhawk, and they're finishing up the improvements on North Forest Hills Road. Really between Summerhawk and 173, there's a fairly large concrete pour planned for Wednesday of this week. Contractors also will be working around Perryville and 173, filling in some gaps and pouring new pavement at that intersection as well. Illinois 251, I'm very pleased to report that the patching and milling work is complete. Contractor right now is placing leveling binder and is scheduled to play surface course this week. It looks like we may even see the striping improvements come in at this week, and essentially that project will be wrapped up once the striping's finished. So that went pretty quickly and was very far ahead of schedule. From there, same contractor's moving over to Harlem Road, just east of Perryville, going around the south side of the park to do improvements. The Bobalink here on Nelson Area, the contractor has essentially finished up their grading efforts. There's going to be some areas that do need to be touched up over there. We'll coordinate those with the Santeria District. Finally, on Velocity, actually, two finales, I guess, on Velocity Drive, the contractor was in to repave the damaged areas of the path, and the damaged concrete aprons were also removed and replaced. There is some touch-up restoration work that needs to be done around those areas. And then finally, Talmadge improvements. We're going to start on that in earnest this week. We're going to, it looks like the contractor's going to be out to dig the receiving pit. We're doing a trenchless technology going across Elm Avenue due to a lot of utilities being present and quite a bit of traffic on Elm as well. Contractor's going to be on site to dig the push pit this week on the west side of Elm Avenue, and then start underground improvements next week. And the week thereafter, they should be doing core out and putting in the curb and gutter following. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have Public Safety Coordinator, Rocco Wagner.
Thank you, Your Honor. From the period of August 29th through September 11th, the Sheriff's Department responded to 777 calls for service, made 188 traffic arrests, which included four DUI arrests and 51 criminal arrests. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Rocco. Next, we have Committee and Trustee Reports. Do we have any reports tonight? Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Administration and Finance Committee met tonight, and we approved warrants along with one resolution that will be moved to the board meeting on October 6th. Also, I would like to congratulate trustee Beck and his lovely bride. They're celebrating 50 years, I understand. So that's quite an accomplishment in this day and age, so congratulations very much to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Snodgrass. Trustee Kidd.
I've received several phone calls about the utility rates, and they would like me to ask the village board that over the next month, think about bringing a motion to reducing the 5% utility rate to 3.5%, 2.5%, 4%. I'll second anybody's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kidd. Trustee Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Improvements and Safety Committee met tonight. We took one of the resolutions off the docket, and then we'll put two forth to the October 6th meeting.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Is there any more committee reports? Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two things that I was involved with since our last meeting is, one was spent some time with Aaron over at Waldo Lawson's Children's Home early in the morning on Friday, and that led up to the Central Christian Shirts Car Show and fundraiser for the special needs of those children. And it was very successful, 250 cars, and so that was a very positive thing. Second of all, I was able to attend the closing ceremonies for the Healing Wall. Very moving ceremony, and I was especially taken aback the fact that there was a young lady who is now college-age that the Korean vets took under their wing when she was